All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll call this committee of the whole meeting to order at six here in council chambers. Do not believe we have any remote electronic attendance, correct?
Correct.
So we move to our oath of office for appointment of Stephen Reganweather to the position of Fire Chief Executive, August 30th, 2022. Could you please join me up here?
I do the introductions.
Oh, yes, you get to do the introduction first.
Well, come on up. Come on up. You've earned your right.
You can.
It gives me great pleasure as the city administrator for Moline, Illinois, to present to everybody Steve Reganweather, the next Fire Chief of the great city of Moline, Illinois. And just a few notes about Steve, his background and how he got to where he is standing here today. He was hired back in September of 1998, a while ago. He came in as a firefighter paramedic and served in that capacity from 1998 until 2010. In 2010, he was promoted to the rank of engineer and stayed in that rank until he became a lieutenant in the fire department in 2016. After 2016, for two years, he served in that capacity before being promoted to the position of Deputy Chief of the Fire Department in 2018. He is a certified Chief Fire Officer, which is the highest certification offered by the Illinois State Fire Marshal's Office. He earned an associate degree in fire science from the College of DuPage. And he is scheduled to graduate from Columbia Southern University this winter with a bachelor degree in fire administration. And then after the oath of office, Steve is going to have his five bugles pinned to his collar by his son Brady. You hear somewhere Brady? There you go. And his chief's badge from his wife, Melody. And with that, may I present Chief Reganweather, Stephen Reganweather.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Stephen Reganweather.
I, Stephen Reganweather.
Having been duly appointed to the position of Fire Chief.
Having been duly appointed to the position of Fire Chief.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct.
Applicable to fire administration.
Applicable to fire administration.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of Fire Chief.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of Fire Chief.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And then I'll have him come down there for the pinning if that's good. There's your second one, girl.
Thank you.
Your fault. You get to keep one.
Okay.
And we keep the other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The podium is yours, chief.
Thank you. I'll try and keep it really short. First and foremost, I'd like to thank our Honorable Mayor and City Council members for having the faith and trust in me to lead our fire department into the future. I'd also like to thank Mr. Vitas for his continued support and his recommendation of me to the City Council for this position. If you're remiss, if I didn't mention Chief Snyder, Chief Gault, Leah Miller, and Ms. Gestopoulos, without your direction, mentorship, and most importantly, your friendships, none of this would have been possible for me. Thank you. And lastly, but certainly most importantly, my family. It's not easy being the wife or child of a dedicated firefighter. I'm aware of that. But through every shift I've worked, every class I've taken, and every promotion I've received, they've been here for me, and I thank them for that, and I love them. I'll end this by saying, throughout the years, I've been very fortunate to have visited many departments across the country, and I can honestly say, by comparison, we have a great one. In large part, that credit needs to go to Chief Snyder for turning us around five years ago, but also to these firefighters standing here to the side of me for buying into and accepting the goals, objectives, and changes that were being made at that time. So my promise to all of you, the wonderful citizens of Moline, and the skilled men and women serving within our department, is to continue leading our organization with the same dedication, pride, and integrity as Chief Snyder has for the last five years. Thank you.
If you wanted to do it.
Any photo opportunity?
Okay.
I think I wanted to actually get a photo of the mayor and city administrator.
Okay.
The argument whether you're aggrieved by the decision.
He's aggrieved, and that's why.
Yeah, he could definitely.
Would it just be a little?
That's one of the things.
You're all welcome. Okay. As the room clears a little bit, we'll move on to number four, board appointments. The mayor's reappointment of Joe Gonyng, Not to be that kind of advice, he's moved to Swanson to the Human Rights Commission for a fully two-year term, expiring August 31st, 2024. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. We move to public comment. Is there a public comment this evening? Great. Can someone please turn the, thank you, Elder Memorial. Please take the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to, oh, sorry, I'm Maria Antiveros, President of Mercado on Fifth. I just wanted to come out and thank the city for the, how much intention and inclusiveness went into the planning of Moline 150's celebration. Friday night was a huge success in our eyes at Mercado. We were so excited to see Hispanic people come out in droves to celebrate when, I don't think we would have gotten that demographic in those numbers had we not given the opportunity to take over the programming. So it was very cool to see so much participation. And then with our vendors as well. The city and the organizers could have easily chosen to bring in an outside vendor from another community, but instead used vendors from right here in Moline, giving the flavor of our town. It was, it was just a great success all around. So wanted to share my joy because I went home that night just buzzing. It was, and so great to see you out on the dance floor.
Got dragged on the dance floor.
We have several events left in this summer, so hope to see you all come out on a Friday night, and we look forward to continuing to partner with the city. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Anna Maria Rolcha, Executive Director, Mercado on Fifth. I echo all of that and just want to invite you guys this Friday. The Office of Minority Economic Empowerment is coming down to Mercado on Fifth to give a proclamation to support Small Business Day and specifically chose our location. So just hope you guys can all make it to that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Is there any other public comment this evening? Okay, seeing that, we move to questions on the agenda, and I have one update. In light of some communication received recently, we will be adding an executive session between item number 8.2 and 8.3. And Mr. Williams, you're prepared to do that? So we move to our COW agenda items. 7.1 is the first, a resolution amending budget resolution 1232-2021 by authorizing changes to various line items in the budget for fiscal year 2022. Ms. Barnes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Oh, yes, we need you to just pull it up close.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, that's great.
Okay. I am very pleased to present to you tonight, for your consideration, the 22, 2022 budget amendments as projected through August 30th. The August budget amendments primarily reflect council action that has already been taken to date to council by resolution. It takes into consideration inflationary cost adjustments, which are currently at an average of 8.5%. Staffing changes, which include 53 new hires, full-time hires, and 30 promotions. It also updates all of our CIP project costs and changes in capital equipment and vehicle costs. And as you know, we will have another opportunity to amend the budget coming back in December of this year, so this is kind of just a snapshot in time. It's the best projections that we have right now. And due to our current position of healthy fund balances and our history of conservative fiscal management, we are projecting that we will weather the current state of inflation through '22 as well as into '23. Departments are working very, very hard on the next three-year budgets. I've been working very closely with Bob and with Barry as well. So over the next six weeks, that's all we're going to do is budget all the way. But this kind of lays the groundwork as we, as we move into the next three years. And I might mention as well, I need to mention, that being able to balance the current year's budget is truly attributed to all of you, all of the department heads, and all of the staff up and down. Very similar to COVID. I know some of you weren't here during the whole process of COVID, but everyone hunkered down and made it work, and we're not skipping a beat on delivering services. So a lot of hard work's been put into this. The net impact of the proposed amendments that are in front of you equate to a reduction in fund balances of $235,000 for a total reduction of, and I use the word only, only 0.06%, and that is a .0006. So it sounds like a large number, but when you look at our budget entirely, it's a very small percentage. And when you look at that against the eight and a half percent inflation that we're facing, and it was a high of 9.1, again, our departments and direction from Bob, it's, it has been outstanding. We are projecting revenues to increase about 2.8% this current year for a total of $4.4 million of increased revenue, and we're going to go through that in a minute. And the expenditures are increasing about 3.2% for about 4.65%, and that is the shortfall of that $200,000 difference. Expenditures are slightly outpacing expenditures. And now, in front of you, is a letter, and I so apologize, I was out of town last week, and somehow we missed the summary getting in the packet to everyone, but I'm going to briefly follow this through. I am going to take about 30 minutes, and I'm hoping I can maybe go faster, but if you have questions, stop along the way. But I've.
I meant to let you finish this sentence.
I was just going to say, I'm trying, I kind of want to, there's a lot of information and a lot of changes that have occurred, and I want to kind of give you a good feel for it, so it lays some groundwork for the upcoming '23 through '25 budget.
Did you mean to say that expenditures are slightly outpacing revenues?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I believe I heard expenditures twice. I didn't know anyone else.
Okay. I'm so sorry if I'm.
No, I just needed to clarify.
Okay. So again, if you take a look at the letter that is in front of you, I'm going to talk about some of the major changes in the revenues that start at the very bottom of that page. I'm just going to kind of hit on them briefly. If you have questions, please stop me. What I'm going to outline is also in the link that is attached to the resolution that's in front of you, that you'll be adopting here over the next couple of cycles. And so I'm just noting those total changes, and this is across all funds, so it's looking very, very broadly at the changes. So again, we're going to start with revenues. Again, they are up, projected up $4.4 million or 2.87%. There's ups and downs in various revenues. The first one being a reduction of $515,000 in TIF taxes, and this is a combination of a couple of things. It is the reduction in final assessed valuations from the county. As you know, we have appeals after we certify the budget, so we had some appeals for reduction in values, coupled with the fact that we reduced our levy rate from the 2.01 down to the 2.94. Not only did this reduce the $500,000 taxes to our general property tax levy, it also impacted the TIF revenue in each one of those TIF funds for the city's portion of those funds. And then we also have a reclassification on SSA revenues. We had them in the category of TIF taxes. It's going down into other city taxes. And that's just for GAAP. It's just a, it's a more consistent way to be reporting them across the board for our audit.
Yes, Mr. Williams?
Just for clarification, so we made the adjustment, and we changed the levy. We adjusted the revenue for property tax, but we just didn't adjust it in TIF?
Well, and we didn't know what those were, because those combinations, it's all based on other city taxes on the total levy rates for the TIFs as well as those TIF values.
Okay.
Yep, so it, there was no way to calculate that prior to.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt.
Do we, do we know, or could we find out? I know we'll see this again. What, what portion of that is exclusively from the reduction as opposed to the other line items? I'd be curious to know that number.
The reduction in the.
In the TIF.
Oh, in the TIF, yes, we can, we can get that for you. But it's upward of a couple hundred thousand dollars across all the TIF funds, I believe, to my, to my recollection. Then the next category is other city taxes, and we are seeing an increase of $1.2 million in this revenue line, and that includes our food and liquor licenses of about $150,000, which is wonderful, and these are coming back from, coming out of COVID. So we're really happy that those revenues are coming back, and some of them are even exceeding our prior levels. In addition, the amusement tax for the tax layer, $200,000, so they're going gangbusters down there now. Our home rule sales tax up $608,000, 288 from gasoline tax, gas and electric. So a nice revenue stream that came back. And yeah, we're just very thankful. And IML, they have also given projections, and we're kind of seeing this statewide.
Yes, Mr. Williams?
The $200,000 for the amusement, is that the year marked in the 2% and the 3% that's, that's dedicated? So it's an increase.
It's an in and out. Yeah, it's a total in and out. But since we're looking across all funds.
No, I just want to make sure that there wasn't anything above that was affecting the general.
Nope, that's exactly right. The next category, again, these are some reclassifications based on GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. We are reclassifying some of these revenues. We are down $8.2 million in use of money. $3 million of that is a decrease in investment revenue from our pension funds. And again, this is largely for the first half of the year. As you know, interest rates are coming back up. We may end up in break even, but I don't have a crystal ball, as opposed to anyone else. We have also seen a difference with the state of Illinois taking over the pension funds and the way that they are investing. It's just a transition. We expect, you know, the long term, it's supposed to be very favorable, but it's that transition cycle, and then, as you know, the markets that first six months kind of took a dip. So we'll address that again in December. In this category, we also have a reclassification of $5.7 million. Previously, in previous years, the pension employee and employer contributions were in this category, and it truly should be down in miscellaneous revenue. It's not an interest income or a use of funds. So that's a proper reclassification. And again, that was based on the history, the way we've always done it. The next category is $2.8 million of additional revenue in intergovernmental revenue. This is largely in the general fund, and we are picking up additional money from income tax, our replacement tax credit, that is basically corporate income tax, sales tax, and then we have seen a slight offset by a reduction in use tax, and that is on online shopping. During the COVID, online shopping was way up there, and now it's come back just a little bit. But overall, there's a balance between our normal sales tax, home rule sales tax, so it's kind of all evening, evening out. But $2.8 million is significant. Again, these are based on projections from IML as well as what we have received year to date, so we're very pleased with that. We've got an additional $3.5 million in charges for services, largely due to a reclassification. In this category, we have $2.7 million that's coming from miscellaneous revenue. We're moving it up to charges for services, and that is in our health and retiree health funds. We are charging our employees for a service as well as the employer, a charge for the contribution to our employees, so it's properly being recorded as a charge for service. We also have seen some increases in our ambulance fees, just due to the running of the ambulance. And then we also have seen, and we're going to talk about that a little bit more, seen some increases in our chargebacks on our internal service funds for the retiree and health insurance funds, as well as in our fleet fund. With all the fuel and related costs for vehicle replacements, those chargebacks have gone up significantly, and you'll see where those are hitting some of the funds. The next category, an increase of $3.8 million in the miscellaneous. Most of them are all the reclasses that we just talked about, so I'm not going to go through that again. The last category then is transfers in, and we've got a $1.8 million transfer in, and then down below, in the next category, will be a transfer out. And it's largely because we are transferring $2 million of ARPA funds for the water improvements. Those are in the restricted category. And when we talked to Baker Tilly, we'd already adopted the budget, but when it's an enterprise fund with ARPA funds, we need to do it as a transfer as opposed to charging it directly out of ARPA. And then we had a couple of other small changes in some of the TIF transfers back and forth, as well as our business district supporting the captain's table. And so that is a broad summary of the revenue changes. Any questions on the revenues? I'm going to move quickly then into the expenditures, and again, expenditures are up about $4.6 million or 3.2%. And again, the largest categories are $2.6 million for hiring the 53 full-time employees, the 30 promotions. And I am very pleased to say, and we talked with Leah today, that brings us down to, other than police and fire, 18 vacancies, or 19 vacancies across the board. And we have five or six police and fire, so that's about 25 employees citywide, significantly reduced from a year ago. It puts us right slightly over a 6% vacancy rate, which is greatly improved from where we were. So Leah has been very, very busy and her staff. The next category is the Parks Department has asked to move forward some additional spending authority on the pool for groundwork and preparation work for this fall. And we're going to talk more about CIP, but MFT and capital projects, we've had some project money deferred to future years. And then broadly across all funds, we've seen an increase of about $1.1 million, largely due to that 8.5 average inflationary cost across all funds. And that includes, the most significant ones are our vehicle maintenance costs, which have been averaging 20 and 22%. Maintenance supplies, all of our fuel chemicals in the utility funds, chemicals for the road, all of our road salt, traffic signal utilities, contract repairs. It's just kind of across the board. We've seen that average hit. We also have seen about $445,000 increase in liability claims. I know you're aware of this, that we've had several large settlements this year. And we did see $375,000 for increased expenditures for its police grants as well as the amusement tax. So we talked about the $200,000 that came in for the amusement. It'll be $200,000 going back out, so that's where this is coming in that category. And then we've already talked about the transfers out. And so broadly across all funds, this leaves us with $365,842,423 in fund balances across all funds. And I would like to take just a few minutes to hit on some, go ahead.
Yes.
I've got a couple of questions on that.
One.
So for the expenditures of the MFT projects that were deferred to future years, you got $2.4 million?
Yes.
Is that on this chart because these numbers are just year-to-date? Do you think that the rest of it will be spent yet this year?
Yes, I think, let me see, I need to turn to that page, and we'll get to that in a minute when we go through CIP, but let me see here, yeah, the 2.4. If you look at this one, Mike, this cover here for the MFT across the board, you'll see a decrease of the 2.4 on that recap.
Right.
Carrying forward.
But I guess I'm asking on these.
Year-to-date.
Is that just because this is year-to-date, and the rest you think will be spent through the rest of the year?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct. I'm sorry. I wasn't listening to your question.
And then, then the other was the additional spending authority for the Riverside Pool. Is that something we're approving tonight as a budget amendment, or is that something that will be brought separately as a discussion item?
No, they aren't asking for additional spending authority. It's the bond proceeds that are currently in the reserves, and they had projected originally, I think they were only going to spend a few hundred thousand dollars. But Eric says with the pool closing down, and if the weather is nice, they're wanting to get started on dirt work and everything else.
So you're just spending next year's money, or?
Yes, it's just the existing funds that we've already bonded for.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, please continue.
So with that, I'm going to quickly move into the highlights on some of our other funds, and I'm hoping our page numbers match up. If you page down in, in your online council agenda packet on page 30. I'm going to talk just briefly about the general fund, and again, very broad update. But if you follow that column down, and that is the general fund amended budget. I'll wait for David to get it up as well. But if you follow that column down, we project that we will end the year with 34.67% of fund balance to expenditures. Our fund balance, we project to be $15,790,000, and that is net of the advances to our TIF funds, and it is net the $1 million for the pension obligation bonds that we restricted last year for, for potential unexpected increases in the city's contribution. So that percentage as compared to our 25% fund balance policy shows that we have approximately $4.4 million, and I don't want to use the word excess, but we do have additional reserves above our 25% policy. So again, very, very pleased to report that number.
So we're closer to like 38%?
I'm sorry, what? We're at 34, 34.67, and if we were to bring it down to 25, I mean, it gives us 4.1. And if we were to bring it down to 25, I mean, it gives us $4.4 million to bring it down to 25%. How that's calculated?
Are you going off the 45?
How that's calculated, and actually, that was one of the questions that you had had in an email, Mike, was the transfer of the pool funds from the general fund, the $3.5 million. That is a one-time transfer. So we exclude that. That's just a one-time exception. So you take the $49 million of expenditures, total expenditures, do you see that? Subtract out the $3.5 million one-time expenditure, then take 25% of that number. That brings you down to the $11,384,000 or 90 days. And we've got in excess of that.
Perfect, thank you.
So we're in a very good financial position going into the budget. I'm going to hit on some of the, as we talked about, expenditures did increase in the general fund. Largely, it's the personnel costs. We have $1.7 million of new positions and benefits in the general fund. We also had $175,000 of increased seasonal pay, largely the three interim directors that the council had approved to hire. We also had some additional overtime in fire, public works, and police, largely because of vacancies. They had to backfill with some overtime in order to keep their shifts full. And it also resulted in additional recruitment costs, advertising, professional technical, and HR to get all this work done. And that was an increase of almost $80,000. We've had some increases as well in our outside legal for additional work they've done on their land use projects for council. And again, we mentioned all the chemical, maintenance supplies, contractual repairs, and then the chargebacks from our internal service funds as a result of the inflation. So that's pretty much the general fund. Again, very, very pleased. The overall fund balance of the $15,790,000 is actually up $20,000 from where we had originally projected the budget to be. Again, I'm just going to keep moving. If you look at the library, it's on page 31. The library continues to be very conservative. Their fund balance this year is actually going up $145,000 projected. Again, largely due to the timing of filling those positions. We had some pretty significant numbers of vacancies at the beginning of the year. And they are in good shape. They are going to head the end of the year at a 23% fund balance to expenditures. So very pleased to report that. In parks, it's on that same page, you will see the fund balance. If you actually go down, I don't know if you can, can you go down on that, David? Yep, right there. They are projecting to end the year with $7,714,000 in fund balance. But of that amount, $6.5 million is for pool proceeds that we'll be spending over the course of next year. So that's in restricted cash, as well as $1.2 million of net reserves that are going to be used largely for future projects. And you'll be seeing those coming forward for '23 to '25. I do want to make mention that they did receive the bids on the pool this last week. And bids, just like on all of our CIP projects, have come in overbid. And so the Park Board is considering using some of that excess funds, the $1.2 million going in to help offset that. And they're working through that because they'll have to work through their whole '23 through '25 CIP budget as well. And we'll be going through that in detail during the budget. I think that's it for parks. Then I'm going to move on to TIP number one and seven. They're on pages 32 is TIP number one. I just want to make mention, as you know, this is the year where we're closing out TIP one. And CED and Tara Osborne, they're busy preparing resolutions to close out that fund. They're working very closely with Ansel Blink as well as Mike Weber. And we're doing all of the due diligence. We've notified the county, we've notified the taxing districts. And the way we have presented it here is that we should be able to break even in that TIP by the end of the year. Looking forward into '23, we anticipate, we have not gotten our valuations for next year yet. We hope by mid-September that we will. But we do anticipate about a half a million dollars of revenue coming back to the city as a result of that TIP closing. So we'll be taking a look at that during the budget as well. TIP number seven, just to highlight it, that's the TIP we always talk about that continues to have some advances from other funds. In the general fund, it's currently $592,000 that the general fund's advanced. Water at $802,000 and WPC at $995,000. It is an ongoing annual shortfall of about $700,000. And we continue to look for investments and development in that area. But based on when the timing would come on board, we all know that by the time it gets on the tax rolls, it can be, you know, a solid 18 months or maybe even longer by the time you build something out. So that's going to continue to be a fund that we watch for. The next area that I want to talk about is our CIP. And in front of you, you should have received a little handout here. And I also would like you to turn to page 46 in your council packet. And we have put the CIP together a little bit differently. We're presenting it different. So starting on page 46, is everybody's there? We are showing the original adopted budget as well as the amended budget year-to-date for every one of our different CIP funds. And if you take a look through these funds, you'll see a lot of little red highlights over to the side for descriptions. Our engineering department was highlighting, they're largely resolutions that the council has already adopted. So we are officially now amending the budget for those actions that have already been taken. It also includes projected cost increases of projects yet to complete this year. And I know David is available. I don't know where he's at. There he is.
He's right there.
He's available too to talk about this. We are going to be talking in depth on September 13th, reviewing the whole CIP for '23 through '25. And you're going to see it in the same format by individual funds. So we've got all the CIP, the water, WPC, stormwater. We've included ARPA as well in these funds. Overall, if you take a look here, it's on this summary. It's a little bit easier to see. If you total down the amended budget, we have adopted or amended the budget for total projects of $26 million across all of our funds. Very aggressive. That's a lot of money and doing a lot of great things throughout the city.
Yes, Mr. Went.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure, so like the MFT, you know, there's like $2.4 million that isn't going to be spent that we budgeted for this year that presumably those projects are going to happen next year. Are those included in that 4.4 million excess? Or those, for right now, they're still budgeted for this year and they're going to just fall over into '23?
First of all, the 4.4 is in the general fund. So these are the fund balances in each one of those funds. So like in MFT, that money sits there until next year. And I know David has.
I just want to make sure everybody was on the same page. That's what, because we have quite a bit of projects that have gotten pushed, and I just didn't want anybody to get confused that we have this additional 4.4 on top of this, all this other additional money that we didn't spend this year.
Gotcha. And I know David has been working, I know personally, because I've been working with David as well as Laura, putting together a very aggressive '23 through '25 plan. And so I think we're all anxious to see that and talk about it on the 13th. So I don't know if you have any additional questions on this. I would like to take just a moment if we could turn to the ARPA section. And that is on page 16 and 17 in your council packet. We had talked a couple of weeks ago that I was going to come back after we talked to department heads, and we were going to try to look at the cash flows to see what projects may come forward or go back. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. If you turn to the unrestricted page, on page 16, unrestricted ARPA, and it is the fourth line down, you will see, and again, this is for council's consideration. We are not making this decision. It is for council's consideration in '23. So you'll hear about this again during the budget. As you know, we received the grant, the $3 million federal grant on the Seventh Avenue reconstruction. Our match on that project is $5.7 million. We wanted to see if council would consider using some of our unrestricted ARPA funds, which we had already allocated for infrastructure during our strategic plan, to actually assign it like we did to 36th Avenue Court, to assign it to Seventh Avenue reconstruct as part of our match. It would only be 2.5 million, and it starts in '23 for a half a million, and then another $2 million in '24. But David is putting together a plan. We still have to find another $3.2 million for the city's match out of future CIPs. But David's going to be talking about that when we present it on September 13th. So I just wanted to throw that out there, so that's kind of out there for you guys to think about. And then the other changes, and we've kind of touched on these, the MCDC, it's about halfway down the page. We amended the budget for $100,000. It's money pulled forward from '21 that we had not finalized that dispersment. And the secure quiet zone on the railroad, again, talking with David, we'd like to pull forward $250,000 out of our $3 million allocation for some work and consultant work that we're doing yet this year. The next one, the big one, is the Renew Moline, again, it's $75,000 pulled forward from '21. And then lastly, the flood, it's three from the bottom, create infrastructure investments to reduce the flood. We had had a million dollars in '23, and we wanted council's consideration to move a half a million dollars forward to start on some improvements down on Riverside, down around the Par properties, potentially down in there for flood, it's on River Drive for flood improvement.
I thought we already had a project that was moving forward for basically that full amount.
Wasn't that the Par project?
Or is that the project you're talking about?
No, that is the project.
Okay. So it's just moving to the year we needed it.
Yeah, we're just moving it forward a half a million dollars.
Okay, but because we said Riverside and Par is not.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's me probably saying it wrong.
Okay, I just saw a lot of nods and I'm like, ah.
Yeah, I was only saying it incorrectly. I apologize for that.
Oh, no, it's.
And then moving down into the restrictive, we've got water and sewer projects. It's just some carryover from last year.
Looking at the Seventh Avenue reconstruction, just you were talking about finding money into those, the future CIPs. Are we, is that in further years because of when work is being done? Or is it that we're not taking as much from this bucket at that time and we're going to be looking forward in the years that are in front of us?
My understanding, and David's going to talk about it more on the 13th, but I believe we've got almost five years of a window to work on that project. So we've got time to react and build that into our future CIP plans for the city's match. But this 2.5 million, if the council chooses to move forward with that, that takes a big chunk out of trying to find it out of other CIP projects.
Thank you. So we had projects that were for road repair and improvements that were budgeted for this year that was using just a little over a million dollars in ARPA funds, right?
Yes, the 36th.
And so is that, it's 30?
36th Avenue Court.
Okay, so.
That, if you look up on that road.
Because you're taking it out, you're amending that down to zero now, right?
It's kind of confusing to look at this. If you look in the 22 amended column, you'll see 36th Avenue Court, $880,000. That was the resolution, that was the actual bid that came in. Then there's still $125,000, if you look two lines up, that's unallocated. So there's $125,000 still available in ARPA unrestricted for road repair that David is working into.
So where did that $800,000 come from?
Oh, that was originally budgeted, if you look over in the adopted column, 22 adopted was $1,005,005. That's what we had originally adopted for the 36th Avenue Court.
Out of ARPA.
Out of ARPA.
Right, but this on page 16, the 2002 adopted goes from that $1 million down to $125,000.
Yes, because if you drop the lines down farther, it's in the same category. We probably should have indented it. You'll see 36th Avenue Court for $880,000.
But where are those funds coming from?
She's on this page. Are you on that page?
And that's where I'm asking, those, okay, so that's the.
It's $125,000 plus the $880,000.
Okay, and we spent $378,000 year-to-date. That's the line, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I know.
Okay, that makes sense.
I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
Is everybody squared?
We're okay. We're squared away. Go ahead.
Okay, and so anyways, I think those are the main changes in ARPA. So, and we'll be discussing this more again during the budget. So any other questions on that category? And I'm sorry, I'm taking a little more time than I had thought. But I'm going to fly here through the rest of these enterprise and internal service funds. If you turn to page 40 in your council packet, we're going to talk about the enterprise funds. And I'm not going to spend as much time as I have on the other ones because we are planning to come back to council on September the 20th. Tony is working with Mike to talk about user fees for these funds that will help sustain those operations as well as future capital for all of those funds. So, but just to give you a snapshot, if you turn to page 40 and take a look at water, and you'll look at that kind of a peach-colored column that says cash and investments as a percentage. We had budgeted 36.6%. We amended the budget to 28% reduction. But on tonight's agenda, you are, for your consideration, is the Silvis line. And we had originally thought that was $2.1 million. It's been reduced to 1.588. So now this cash balance is coming in right at 36.22%. So in December, when we amend it, those numbers will be reflected. So right now, water is holding its own. As I talk about this, and it's just very, very brief, if you also turn to page 57, flip down to 57, you will see a change in the middle of the page, water and WPC, they're smack dab in the middle. There has some movement, there's been some movement on capital equipment that's been deferred, and some of it, Tony has decided some of it isn't even needed. I'm trying to look for Tony. Oh, there's Tony. And in the water department, we're being reduced from a half a million dollars down to $150,000. And then in WPC, we are deferring projects of $5.3 million down to $2.8. So that is also helping the cash flows. And it's just based on the timing of the projects. And we'll be talking about that more even on the 20th.
Sure, Went.
Is that cyber stuff moving into the future? Is that, we're deferring it another year? Is that the plan?
Yes.
Okay, it's not that we're not doing it, it's just, okay. Thanks.
So if we go back to page 40 and we look at WPC, you'll actually be seeing those cash flows going. you'll actually be seeing those cash flows going up to a hundred and twenty-five percent. But that's largely because of those deferred capital equipment costs. Because we have seen increases in personnel from filling vacancies as well as some inflationary costs. But we're in good shape moving forward. But looking long-term for building South Slope, we've got to take a look at the user fees. Moving then across the page into forty-one, or down onto forty-one, is our stormwater. Again, we're going to talk about it on the twentieth. If you take a look at the blue line on stormwater for the August amendments, I just want to point out that net cash provided for operating activities, that is virtually the net amount that is available for projects. When you pay for your personnel, pay for your operating, ongoing, other than drawing down fund balances, which their fund balances are down now to about three hundred thousand. That's all we have for projects. So it really comes down to, on user fees, when we talk on the twentieth, if you're wanting more projects, we're going to have to take a look at fees, ongoing. And then in the sanitation, we talked about this during the budget. Sanitation right now is in a bit of a drawdown. We did do a cash advance from the general fund for a half a million dollars. And that is primarily what is sustaining that fund. If you take a look on the yellow lines halfway down the page under the amended, we've got about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's largely the general fund. So starting next year, that fund is also going to be paying back the general fund, fifty thousand dollars a year, plus some interest. So if you look at the blue line up above, again, that net cash provided in operations, it's a drawdown of two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for the current year, plus it'll be another fifty thousand for next year. This fund has taken also a big hit on vehicle maintenance and the cost of replacing vehicles. We've got several vehicles that are going to be replaced in three to five years. And Sarah's been looking outwardly, how is that going to impact? And so we've had to charge back, you know, slowly some money to start trying to build up for those future replacements on those garbage packers. And so that is the enterprise funds. And then the very last category will be our internal service funds. And they start on page forty-two. And I'm going to kind of talk together with health and retiree. Both of those funds are having a very good claim year. We have had an increase of new hires as well as an increase in retirees. But with the additional employee contributions and employer, it's breaking even. We haven't seen any unusually high claims. And so we anticipate to end of the year, in the year in good shape. In the retiree fund, we currently have about twenty-eight percent that is funded and seventy-two percent unfunded liability. So we're slowly kind of creeping up, holding our own. The next one is the IT fund and that starts on page forty-three. And the biggest change for the amendments, as you know, you had a special meeting on the mobile data computers for police as well as the docking station. Those two items combined was a little over a hundred thousand dollars. That's the major change in IT. You'll see some significant cash balances that are available. But when we present to you the twenty-three through the twenty-five budget, David's got servers that are being replaced as well as some technology improvements here to the chambers as well as for the cow room. So we'll see those dollars going down pretty quickly. And we anticipate those cash balances kind of fluctuate up and down. And then we're going to skip public equipment, we're going to jump to liability. Again, as you know, we've had several large claims. So that's the biggest change is four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of additional claims. In 2021, I don't know if I got you top two when we did the audit or not, but we did change the way that we calculate our incurred but not reported claims at the end of the year. And Margaret knows this all too well. With liability claims, some of our claims could be hanging out there two, three, four, five years. And so what we have worked out with our auditors, and it's the way most audits are done, is we have implemented a smoothing with a rolling average of what the claims are over a five-year period. So that has really helped from a budget standpoint that we don't have to have potentially as much cash on hand. And so we are going to, you're going to be seeing kind of a slow reduction in that liability fund as we had talked about before, over the course of several years, that I don't think we're going to have to hold as much money in that fund as what we had originally thought. So that's a very positive thing. And then two last funds, and we'll move on here, and facility, it's on page forty-four. We have filled a lot of vacancies with custodians as well as a new coordinator. And we have some additional capital, some flip in the capital, but facility is right on track. Going into twenty-three through twenty-five, Sarah is working very hard to identify if there are more assets that need to be on our replacement schedule. As you know, we're making some improvements to City Hall this year that had not been on the replacement schedule. So we're hoping to catch those. But as part of catching them, we will also have to increase some of those chargebacks to accommodate that. But we're going to try to work that into the budget, so long-term, that will be sustainable. Then the very last category is the fleet and that is on page, oops, I flipped out of this. Thank you, page forty-five. And this fund is the one that probably took the absolute biggest hit with inflation. And it is because of all the fuel costs, the parts, the vehicle, the actual cost of vehicle replacements, all that together. And as you know, it's also the timing of when those vehicles get replaced. If you turn to page sixty, I just wanted to show you very briefly, the first top of the page, you'll see a total of one point nine million dollars. Those are for vehicles that we ordered in twenty-one that we were going to be paying in twenty-two. There is still a large chunk of those vehicles we still have not received or paid for. So we have to continue, if you see the fund balance going up, that's why, because we've got to keep that money in reserve for when we ever do get delivery. And then we've got two point seven million dollars in current vehicles. And again, some of those costs have gone up just because of the cost of vehicles as well as Sarah has had a couple of vehicles that we had on order and they've gotten canceled because they couldn't get delivery. And then we have to turn around and get a newer model or a new vehicle and then some of them are up seven and eight thousand dollars. So it's just kind of the world that we live in now for the next few years. And then lastly, on this one, I wanted to tell you, when we were talking about ARPA funds a few weeks ago, we had talked about three ambulances that had come forward that the council had authorized to order. We were able to include in the fleet budget through chargebacks to make that work, almost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of an overage that we did not have to take out of ARPA funds. Because that was the direction from council to try to come back and see if we could work it in, and we have. So pleased to report that. And then I just wanted to make mention then that doing these amendments, it helps pave the way now for our twenty-three through twenty-five budget process that we are going to be working hard, like I said, the next six weeks. And we continue to maintain an excellent financial position despite the inflationary economy that we are in. And again, that's the direction from all of you. And then just a heads up, on September thirteenth, David will be presenting the twenty-three through twenty-five CIP for your review and discussion. On the twentieth, we'll have the user fee discussion with Tony as well as Mike. Mike on the sanitation. And then we are on target to distribute budget books on October eighteenth. Thank you very much. Sorry, I went over here.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve this.
Move to approve.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Moir, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. So we move to seven point two, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-four, personnel of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section twenty-four dash thirty-two oh seven, appendix one, by adding a job description for right-of-way utility technician. Mr. Vitas?
Yes, Mayor and members of council, this is a request to approve the job description for the right-of-way utility technician position. What we are doing is we are looking at adding additional staff moving forward with the broadband project citywide so that we'll have field inspectors who are readily available to follow the crews to ensure that new poles don't get stuck up, that everything is being done in accordance with the city ordinance and any agreement that we reach with MetroNet going forward. And we'd recommend approval of the job description so that we at least have it in place. And then going forward, looking forward to finding people to fill these positions, you know, probably for the fall.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Moir, second by Alderman Timian, discussion. Mr. What?
You had said these positions, is it just one or is it multiple?
We're looking at two positions to be funded through the ARPA fund as a part of our broadband funding.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Seven point three, an ordinance designating a Skelly gas station located at eight hundred twenty-fifth Avenue, Moline, Illinois as a locally designated landmark. Mr. Vitas?
Yes, this is just a wonderful example of old Moline. I mean, if you had the opportunity to go down and take a look at the gas station and think about what it looked like just a short six months ago or three months ago, they have done an outstanding job. And it's our recommendation, of course, based on historic Preservation Commission's recommendation to approve having this building officially designated a local landmark and to be placked as such.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Went, I'll just go right up. Seconded by Alderman Macias.
I'll withdraw if one of you gets one.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Seven point four, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-five zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances by enacting an amendment to the zoning map incorporated therein as section thirty-five dash thirty-one oh three for one hundred and fifty-one nineteenth Avenue.
Sure, this matter is brought forward, being brought forward from the Plan Commission where they recommended approval so that we can actually convert this property from a bank to a coffee shop. It has been fully vetted and it's recommended for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Williams, discussion? Yes, Mr. Moir?
Thank you. So if I read this right, the Plan Commission recommended that this... Well, I think staff actually recommended to the Plan Commission that this not be approved. And the Plan Commission then overrode it, is that correct?
Ryan, if you could come up.
Ryan Deal, Canadian economic director. So you're partially correct. That staff report was one of the last messages of us using an outside consultant. And when staff actually reviewed it, we actually at the Plan Commission also recommended approval. So it was a consultant that recommended denial of it. But staff, internal staff, actually recommended approval. So we are in full support of the Plan Commission's recommendation.
So that building's been around for quite a while, that used to be a restaurant with a drive-through, I believe.
Okay.
It was a burger restaurant at one time, right?
Jerry's. Yes, you are correct, yeah. And the name does sound familiar.
So why would we need to switch it from B one to B three to return it to...
Because we are going from a bank to in-vehicle sales. And so our ordinance actually separates those two out. And so it is required with the B one that you cannot do in-vehicle sales in that setting district. So that is why we're recommending it's going to be three.
Yes, Mr. What?
And we've run into this before in the past and you and I had these discussions earlier. My concern, I want this a hundred percent, this use to happen here, without question. The concern, and I think it was probably raised by the Plan Commission and we've run into this other places and this is, I think, one of the downfalls of how our code works, is that if we move it from the B one to the B three, then the entire list of everything that's in B three then just becomes by permit. And so if we've run into issues with coffee shops being promised to us at certain places and then they turn out to not actually be there and then someone could go and put a car lot there or something like that.
So that's the downfall of Illinois state law. That Illinois law does not allow for conditional zonings, unlike other states. So we have a couple of options, we could do PUDs, which can be rather onerous and those are really, typically should really only be used for a very special type of situation. Or you have what our ordinance has, which is supplemental regulation. So if somebody wanted to do a car lot on that lot, there would be several things that they would have to do to actually mitigate that, those negative impacts from the neighborhood. So there's kind of two schools of thought. Either we can, we do PUDs, we can do supplemental regulations or we can expand our use table and go that way. So it's, it is a difficult thing and something that the council has to just kind of have some sort of trust with the developer that that's what they're going to do. And then I feel fairly confident, I've reviewed our ordinance and I feel that we have sufficient mitigating conditions for other type of uses, like a car lot, for example. So, but I know what you're saying, is the idea that we'd like to maybe look at doing, at least simplifying our PUD process so that we have that ability for somebody, so.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Number seven point five, resolution weaving the requirement that the owner of the property located at thirty thirty-nine fifty-fourth Street be required to extend a public water main across the frontage of said property. Mr. Vitas?
Yes, through the utility department and through the administration, we're recommending approval of the request as presented this evening based upon the cost to extend it across the front of the property, which is about a hundred thousand dollars to this particular individual versus the five to seven thousand dollar estimate that is presented here tonight. And we've done this before for other property owners recently and we're recommending approval.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Moir, second by Alderman O'Brien, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
That was my property and I didn't understand what you said, you approved.
The lower amount.
We...
We approve the request.
The motion was to approve your request.
For the variance behind my house?
Correct.
Correct.
You're good.
You got what you want.
I said a hundred thousand, but that doesn't apply to you.
Okay.
Are we going to vote on it again?
No, we're at seven point six. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Leander Construction, Inc. for installation of biosolids dewatering equipment at North Slope wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Vitas?
The item is budgeted and we're recommending approval as presented with the use of the WP reserves for the difference in the bid.
Move to approve.
Second.
Was that you? Yes, you were. Okay, motion by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Williams, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Seven point seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an impact memorandum of understanding with Illawarra Construction Labor and Management Council for the North Slope wastewater treatment plant biosolids screw press dewatering system project. Mr. Vitas?
Yes, we are moving forward, working with Illawarra Construction Labor and Management Council on projects in excess of a million dollars here in the city of Moline. And this is an example of one project that we're recommending approval, the resolution. We also did the same thing with the swimming pool project. And going forward, we will continue to work with them on projects such as the fire station and any other project in excess of a million dollars.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Went, question? Yes, Mr. What?
This was originally budgeted for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's under... It's under, if it would have come in as budgeted, it'd be eight fifty.
It was eight hundred and fifty thousand is the original budget.
But is the, you said the impact, are we, is that a million dollars like a hard and fast? Is that somewhere, or is that just kind of as a general?
A million, the one point one seven five million is the actual bid.
But, but if it would have come in at eight fifty, would we have not done an impact then? Or, I, what's that?
We've arbitrarily set it at a million so that not every project has to require an agreement. And we did that in discussion actually with them months ago.
I, I didn't know if that was a written policy or, or something like that, it was just something.
They do it differently on all different kinds of places.
I think it would be on a case-by-case basis and we would have a discussion with Illawarra based on the complexity of the project.
Thank you.
That's another part of it, thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. So we move to our informational, Mr. Vitas, eight point one, September status and information report.
Yes, and in keeping with the, the practice that we started this year, you have in front of you another status and information report, uh, for the month ending, actually, August and then going into September. And if there are any questions about any projects, uh, please feel free to reach out to myself and/or any of the directors here in the organization. As you know, the documents themselves do get posted online, so they are available to further our efforts to be transparent about our projects and our programs as we attempt to deliver the results on the strategic plan, as well as council directives, or for that matter, any other, uh, projects or programs that come up during the course of the year. Not getting a lot of feedback from anybody on it, so I'm assuming that it's working. It must be working, and that's a good thing because I know, I know when I started, it was a good start.
If you want some feedback, no.
Yes, Mr. Webb?
One of the things in here was the enforcement of landscaping code, um, non-conformity mitigation thereof, I think is what the, the title was. Within it, and I know that we've gone round and round here, we, we had a, the, the Best Buy spot, which is now just going to be a, a lead parking lot for, in perpetuity. But, um, that, we had, I think it got tabled when we asked to, to really enforce it. But this says that we're, uh, that this has been delayed until we hire. I'm assi-, I'm assuming that's an assistant economic development director position till the fall?
There's two positions that remain to be filled, one we just advertised, that's the economic development management position or manager position, and that's meant to be, uh, the right hand, actually, to, uh, to Ryan and to myself to work on projects like this, um, going forward, as well as the assistant director position, which hasn't been advertised yet, but it will be advertised. And that one is meant to handle a lot of the planning and zoning efforts. So that person would be working with Sean and be working with Irene, and, and I think that would be that team. And then there would be Ryan and then whoever takes the positions, economic development manager, and as well as the community development efforts would go through Ryan as well. So we're trying to build that team back up.
But, but to that point, if we're not actually going to enforce the code that's been enforced for the last ten years and hasn't had any problems up to this point, we have somebody going into Gordmans, I think Harbor Freight or whatever. Are we going to run into the same issue where that's, landscaping's not going to be updated because we're just deciding not to enforce that part of our code, or? I, with the delay of these things, there's real-world implications of it. And, I mean, and, and obviously I'm, I still have some concern why this council voted not to enforce our ordinance that has worked for ten years. But we're going to wind up with another location in which they're doing a rehab of it and there was an opportunity to improve our community and it's just going to go by the wayside. Because every time we delay-
Well, thank you, Mr. Webb, I, you have made your port position clear on multiple occasions, so, um, if you don't, if there's nothing further that's new on this topic, then we need to keep to do-
We have asked staff to work on it and now it says it's delayed, and that's my concern is that this keeps getting delayed.
Yes, so did you get the answer?
No, I don't have an answer.
No, I mean, I mean, Ryan, you can jump in if you want, but I, but I think, you know, we fully appreciate and understand this issue. There's no question that we have a lot of asphalt parking lots that were built a long time ago. And the goal of the ordinance, uh, as it was written, and there's different interpretations on it and debates, and I, and I respect all those opinions. The Gordmans project, when it comes forward, and I don't believe it's been in front of us yet, but there was an issue, and it's kind of what started this whole thing, was, you know, parking spaces versus landscaping, and they brought it to our attention, actually, in the very first meeting. And that was al- almost a year ago when that happened. And I think that's when this whole discussion actually started and then we got a lot of different opinions. Clar-, we, we need clarity, there's no question about it. And I think the council really needs to weigh back in in terms of the way the ordinance was structured, as to ways it's being interpreted then versus today. So lacking that clear direction, I mean, it would be my recommendation that as Gordmans comes forward and if they can't meet the, uh, you know, the balance between parking versus landscaping, I think that needs to come back forward for a decision.
Yes, so my, my understanding is, is it was, it was an interpretation question. Um, and, and Legal made the interpretation that, that what was going on with Best Buy is, is, or the old Best Buy is within our ordinance. That being said, why I put that in, in, that update in that report was, was noting that we need to work on fixing the ordinance. And that is going to be one of the priorities that I'm going to task the assistant director with, as, as well as several of our other kind of outstanding zoning issues that we have, that we, we do. We do need to clarify this ordinance. But we are going to continue working with Legal and, and with what their interpretation is, in, until we change what's on the books. So, that's, that's all I could say, because that's, you know, we, we, we work with Legal, they give us kind of interpretation and, and, and we run with that. And if the council would like for staff to do something different, then that is certainly council's prerogative. And, and can work with us and, and, and direct us to do that. But, um, the reason I put that update in there was just to note that, yes, it is going to be something we are going to be looking at, and I will be tasking the new assistant director to be working on that.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
So if I heard you right, that right now it's just not a pri-, unless we give you direction to make it a priority, it's not a priority until you hire this other person, and that's fine.
I, I will be honest with you, with, with everything that's going on, on, on my team and, and with everything else, we just do not have the time to study it and, and to give it the proper analysis that needs to be done. I, I could write a Band-Aid and, and get it through the process rather quickly. I think this is something that needs to be studied, it's something that we're looking at with, um, utilities, with the overall kind of how do we deal with stormwater all within the city of, of Moline. And I think that this is an important enough issue that, um, I would respectfully ask that, um, you know, we, we take the time and get it right. I would not like to just write a Band, you know, do a Band-Aid and be done with it and then we're in a similar situation in a year, so. So that, that is why I put it in there was that I would like to direct the, the, the new assistant director to work with me and work with other city departments, uh, to get something that actually kind of hopefully addresses this overarching issue, not just, you know, one specific part of it. I think our landscape ordinances in general probably need to be looked at.
Thank you.
So just for clarity, so any of the, um, redevelopments until we get to that point, there's not going to be a landscaping requirement for them?
I am going off of the, the legal interpretation that we received from, from, uh, Corporation Council.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, anything further under September status and information report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to eight point two, chapter thirty-four, water and sewers with the Moline Code of Ordinances, housekeeping. Ms. Kostopoulos?
Thank you. So in front of you, uh, on your laptops, is the weather lengthy section thirty-four, which we originally brought to you maybe back in March. And again, consistent with our goal to update, not make policy changes, but to update, uh, to current practices or name changes, et cetera. You have before you our, uh, changes for this chapter. We did ask for comments several months ago, I believe Alderman Webb, you sent a number of comments and questions. We have, uh, with primarily Tony leading this, uh, we have answered those and made the appropriate changes. So tonight, we are looking for additional comments or questions. I want to highlight one thing. In our original, uh, revisions, per Tony Lodi's suggestion, we had deleted section thirty-four dash eleven oh six, which is the seasonal termination. That was at, at Tony's suggestion, we deleted this because it's simply not done. I ask if any of you have any questions or comments about leaving it or deleting it.
And, Mr. Webb?
Say that, because it's in here right now.
Right, it is, so we undeleted it.
And now you're asking for more feedback?
Yeah, so in our original draft-
Okay, okay.
It was deleted. In your current draft, it's undeleted.
Okay.
Got it. Are there any comments for Ms. Kostopoulos?
So if it's approved as is, it would, the chain would be just the, the, the director of the ordinance?
Correct.
Mr. Schmidt, was that a question?
Yeah, so, um, you said that is, that is not currently the practice?
It is my understanding that there are termination of service throughout the year.
Mr. Webb?
Didn't we have, and, and maybe this was the thing while we did through COVID, was just as long as they put some kind of payment plan and paid like twenty-five bucks, that they, it wouldn't get turned off. Is that now gone? Okay, so, because I, I, I knew that was kind of the compromise that I think the last council came up with, rather than this just blanket, hey, you now know you don't have to pay anything for six months because we're not going to do anything to you. And so I, I, I think that that becomes somewhat of a problem if, I mean, I, I, I don't disagree. I, I don't want to turn people's water off in the middle of, of the winter and, and those sorts of things. But there's the unintended consequences of if you, it's kind of like having an absolute, uh, eviction moratorium. Some people take advantage of the situation. And so, I, I would like to see something in which a payment plan, some good faith payment or something kind of what we had done before seems to make more sense to me that we then, you know, whether it's a tenant or, or something, because then you have the direct communication with that person because we still do accounts only in the owner's names. And so that seems to be a, a better approach. Otherwise, you're going to wind up with, unfortunately, you know, in situations with landlords and tenants, tenants just then stop paying in October and then move out in March and are gone. And have racked up a water bill for whatever.
Ms. Kostopoulos?
So that is why we undeleted it. And, and so in our update, and remember, we are just updating chapters. And we considered either deleting it or changing it to be more of a policy decision, which we could address separately. So we thought the better, uh, way to go here was to just maintain the current language. And then going forward, we could address either revising the current language or making some other change.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
But in some ways, isn't offering a program that's built more around some sort of payment plan, wouldn't that actually be, allow them to stay longer? Because under the, the current way it's written, it buys you an extra thirty days, but if you don't pay in October and then you get to the end of November and it, maybe you've been in good faith and proven it, but then you're over. Whereas if you go onto that payment plan to go through and, you know, if you're seasonal work or whatever, um, it seemed to me that actually that, that type of proposal is more lenient and more likely to get people who are getting an actual investment. I think it does both because it allows for a longer-term problem. And I'm not sure if that's a positive or a negative, and I'm curious of your perspective on that, Tony.
First, sorry for making that deletion, I- Secondly, I want to inform you that the purpose for that seasonal termination language is because in the industry, there are, um, heating systems, boiler heating systems that use water and, and when those become, became less and less prominent and, and forced air came, you know, became prominent, then, you know, that language kind of became obsolete. And I can just tell you, in current practice, it is not observed. Uh, if you would like, uh, I can work with Carol and we'll come back with a recommendation for you in, uh, you know, a couple of months, but sometime before the cold weather sets in.
But is the consensus of this council that keeping it undeleted is where we're at? Yes, Mr. Timmy?
If we're not enforcing it, I don't, I personally don't know why it's there, but, I mean, that's just kind of-
I agree.
Uh, there, I, I agree that a policy direction that we could draft as compassionate and understanding of circumstances, that isn't codified in law and doesn't back us into a corner, uh, in five years, might be a better way to approach this, uh, kind of thing.
Yes, Mr. Webb?
And to your point, is, is there any indication, or do you guys have within your system to know if they're on a boiler or steam? And there's no way to track that if, if that, if people could register that way? Because that, that is obviously a, a huge concern. It's, there's, there's a difference if you're shutting off somebody's water and they've got to make different arrangements for showers or whatever, but.
Yeah, that would be something in the customer information system that utility billing uses. And, uh, I'm sure that there's a way to track that, but, um, it would be, you know, like housing inspections, you know, where, you know, you, you'd have to stay on top of that and, you know, it's just one more thing.
I can tell you in my housing search, there's a lot of homes with boilers still functioning in them all over the city. All over, it's the best kind of heater there is, actually.
Alright, Mr. Schmidt?
And, and I would think as we look toward a policy, I think more space for water, particularly in a case where it is for the heat source. And if that's a, you know, they say, hey, I have a boiler, and that's, you know, part of that documentation process, I think that's, um, I, I would hesitate to see us totally losing the opportunity to have someone who comes to us and says, you're turning off my water, it's turning off my heat, and that we would just have to go ahead, or I don't know how you would work around that.
Yeah, we could, uh, we could potentially change the termination notice. Everyone that is terminated gets a notice. And we could change the notice, asking them to, to contact us if they, they have, um, hot water heat.
Okay. Still needing some sort of clearer consensus?
So it sounds like it would be, uh, better to leave this language as is and develop a policy or some guidelines.
That's what I'm hearing from the council, yes, Mr. Webb?
If that's what Tony, I, I'll make a motion to, uh, have Tony and Carol come back with a, um, a suggestion on how to, uh, move forward with those ideas.
Would you like to wear, weigh in on this consensus during an informational?
I've got that in the minutes, that, that's what council is looking for and staff will be bringing that back.
That's what I'm hearing, and that's what, so, policy, and leave it in and develop a policy.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Alright.
So policy.
Right, Mr. Williams?
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, five ILCS one twenty slash two C eleven. in discussion relating to the purchase, sale, or delivery of utilities, five ILCS one-twenty slash two C twenty-three.
Second.
Second by Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Seven i's, no n's.
Right, we're going into, we are back in open session to number eight point three, proposed amendment to chapter six, rights of way and public property uses of the Moline Code of Ordinances. Mr. Vitas?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, those in the audience, if you're sticking around. I guess going, going, looking at the, the interest in, in this particular ordinance and, and the discussions that have ensued for some time now, it would be my recommendation going forward that we've had some valuable input, both from the Alderman as well as from our new Director of Engineering. And we understand it to be a complex matter. And it's a matter that's going to take some effort on behalf of the city to reflect on where we were when we adopted our ordinance some twenty odd years ago, where we are today, the modernization of our, of our future broadband network, and working diligently and collaboratively with our telecom providers as well as our energy company, and anybody else who does business in our right of way, be they business or a subcontractor doing business for a, business for one of our businesses, which is often the case. It's my suggestion that, that we entertain the idea of having a working group. Working group comprised of city official, city officials, telecom engineers, power company engineers, and to have these technical people on both sides of the table, on all sides of the table, actually sit down and, and, and discuss how best we could plan our right of ways for the future so that as we redevelop, as we grow this city south of the Rock River, which is the topic at the next roundtable, I believe on the thirteenth. But that we, that we create and convene a working group and that council support that working group going forward so that we can bring a resolution to disputes that might exist or misunderstandings that might exist. But to walk away with a clear understanding at the end of the day that we'll have an ordinance unlike those around us that is enforceable, it's manageable, it addresses our need to reduce the, the overhead cabling in this city at some point over a period of time. And that going forward, that we have the teeth to do that. But that would be the recommendation to the administration as well as the engineering department in order to try and get this matter nipped in the bud, as they say, and produce a meaningful result at the end.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from Alderman? Ask Mr. Went?
What, what's the timeframe of when this will get together and when will we start seeing some, or can we have a goal of when we'll see some recommendations for improvements? Because my concern is we're going to convene this group and it'll be months and months before we get anything back from them. And like so many other things, it'll drop into the dark hole and,
I, I think what I would suggest is this, because it's, it's a valid question. I, I think before I answer that question, though, I think what I'd like to do is I'd like to have that discussion with, with Tony. I'd like to have that discussion with Mike. I'd like to have that discussion with David. And I'd like to have that discussion with the telecom providers and the power company to see, one, do they agree and want to participate? And then, two, if they do agree to participate, are they readily available to do that? And what their expectations are? Is they're going to ask us, well, how much time is this going to take? They're busy people like we are. They say, how much time? Well, nobody wants to spend a lot of time on this. It could take a few months. I mean, there's no question. I mean, there's a lot going on. Everyone is busy. But we could convene these working groups and they can meet, you know, and we could do the issue identification. What are the issues? Let's dissect our ordinance. What are the issues? You know, what are the recommendations for improvement? What are the things that we can agree on that we can bring back to the city council for council's consideration? You know, and, and you're talking several months. I mean, I, I don't imagine you can get this done in less than ninety days. I just doubt it, knowing what's going on.
Mr. Schmidt?
I guess I would like to see as we move forward that we as the city, the governing body, kind of make the effort to lead on that timetable. And certainly speak within our staff in going forward. I, I don't think we should be going to the telecoms to say, oh, we want to do this. How long do you think it will, I think we should tell them how we want it to go. And then, obviously, work with them if they're like, whoa, 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 let us tell you why that won't work or shift those things around. But as part of that conversation, I think we need to step up and take that leadership first in respect of their busy times, frames, as well as, as respect of trying to get it done on our timeframe.
I mean, this is the busy time of the year for, for telecoms and for the power company. I mean, this is when they get their work done. Their emergency work happens during the winter months, right? I mean, they're doing repairs and maintenance and, you know, any new work they're doing. And planned work happens during the construction season. So, I want to hear from them, you know, I mean, if we're looking at a ninety-day turnaround, talking about three months' time, right? So, September, October, November. You're talking about going to, it's basically the end of the construction season by the time you get to November. So, that to me is initially a timeframe that I would look for. You know, I don't want to be rushed. I really, truly do not want to be rushed. I don't think that, that doing that is going to produce the results we want. You know, we've got a busy construction season right now, extremely busy. But these meetings will take time. We'll spend hours having these discussions, and I know that. You know, and it's a large number of people at the table. When you saw the room, when we first met with them, the room was packed. So, I need to know who from the telecoms and the power company will sit at the table with us and, and be willing to work on a sol, a long-term solution.
Well, in the meantime, the people of Moline are waiting for the agreement to come forward. Correct, but in terms of priorities of energies by our staff, that has come first so far. And so, I would hope that the staff could focus on the deliverable to the community on, on that while beginning these conversations as needed. Mr. Timian, then, Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. At the last working session about this topic, I, I made the analogy that, you know, we can't bury one cable like we shouldn't replace one tire on a car instead of doing all at the same time. And I just, I want to applaud staff because the working group is the method by which we accomplish this. We all have vested interests in the infrastructure. And we're talking about future-proofing not just the city's infrastructure, but also gas, electric, telecom, everyone. So, by taking this leadership role, I think it is a really, really forward-thinking and, and great move. And so, I, I endorse it.
Mr. Went?
And, and to that point, I, I, I don't disagree. But to Alderman Schmidt's point about driving this, and you're talking about having deliverables in, in November? Like of changes? Because, because, because quite honestly, all of those utilities, their incentive right now is they love our code because they can do whatever they want. There's no teeth. They can install stuff. They can break up the sidewalks and get to it whenever they feel like it. They can put secondary poles and there's nothing in it. We've got a twenty-five-hundred-dollar bond for an entire project that I don't know if we've ever actually gone in and called the note on. And, and so, right now, they have every incentive in the world to keep the status quo. And so, to Alderman Schmidt's point, we need to have a timeframe that says, hey, the bus is going or the train is going. Get on if you want some input on how to improve this. Is there something you want to share? Okay. But if you don't, that the train is going. Because you will get slow-rolled forever and we will get nothing done. And, and to this point that we were discussing earlier about like double poles and, and those sorts of things, that wouldn't affect our current double pole situation, wouldn't affect the future installation of, of the project. We need to take care of those things now. Because I, I think through this discussion, we've discovered there are a ton of holes in our, our ordinance. And we need to fill that and have a timeframe in which that happens. Otherwise, I have a feeling come November, you're going to come back and say, well, we haven't really been able to meet very much. They've complicated things. This is just way too complicated. And then we're going to be, oh, it's going to be another thirty days, another ninety days. And so, I, I hope we have a deliverable by November.
Well, I think, I think the first priority, and I'm going to go on record and say it, is the broadband project. That is a strategic goal. It is the number-one goal of the citizens of the city of Moline. And that is where I'm going to focus my energy in the next thirty days. I have no intention of not focusing on that. I've been waiting patiently for Metronet to respond. They're beginning to call for meetings, beginning to respond. And, and that's where the focus is going to be by this administration, is delivering that result. Because we are already behind by months. We should have been in, going in the ground or going up in the air by now, and we're not. So, I don't want to have to report that we failed to deliver to the citizens because that's their goal. That's not my goal. That's the citizens' goal. They want it. You know, they're clamoring for it and, you know, that's going to be step one. If we can get the agreement in place and move forward with Metronet, great. Then we sit down and we start talking about this ordinance. And how do we address it with this working group and fix this? Because it, it, it's an important issue. The, the double pole, that's an AT&amp;T and a, and a, and a mid-America problem. That's whose problem? That's not Metronet's problem. That's their problem. For decades, that's their problem, and they can't fix it. They can't even fix it. So, I mean, we're pushing down the same, the same road that they're pushing internally and having problems doing it. So, who knows? Maybe this working group will come up with a solution and a model that works in Moline that even mid-America can roll out elsewhere within their, within their service area. Who knows? Maybe we're the ones that are going to solve the problem through the discussions that we have. You don't know. It's a possibility. So.
Thank you very much. Anything further? Okay, we'll close out the committee of the whole and call the regular council meeting to order. A pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there an invocation, Alderman Moyer? No? Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Waldron? Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session Minutes of August second, twenty, I'm sorry. That's correct. Of August second, twenty twenty-two, Council and Executive Session Minutes of August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and appointments made during Committee of the Whole on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
And, and,
yes?
There was, and I, I apologize. I saw this a couple of weeks ago and I meant to send you an email. I, I believe that there was a vote regarding the ADUs of removing the family requirement. That we made that motion and there was a vote for it. It references it, but does not say that we voted in favor of removing the family.
Okay.
So, I apologize. I meant to. So, it was a couple of weeks ago.
So, how would you like to address that?
I think that we'll pull out, that was August second?
Yeah.
I think we'll pull that out this evening and not approve those minutes, and I'll bring those back next time.
Yeah, I apologize.
If you need to restate it then for the record?
Thank you, Alderman. So, I'm requesting approval of Committee of the Whole, I'm sorry, rather, of Council and Executive Session Minutes of August sixteenth and appointments made during this evening's meeting on August thirtieth. Resolutions. Council Bill eleven thirty-six dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution amending Resolution number twelve thirty-two dash twenty twenty-one, the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two for the fire department by temporarily increasing the authorized strength for sworn personnel from sixty-five to sixty-six. Council Bill eleven thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, resolution approving a final change order with Langman Construction Incorporated for project number thirteen eighty-one, twenty twenty-two, city-owned lots and surface road maintenance program for the amount of ninety-nine thousand, fifty dollars and twenty-nine cents. Council Bill eleven thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to authorize the purchase and installation of equipment for the upfitting of one twenty twenty-three Ford interceptor utility K nine vehicle from Federal Signal Corporation for the amount of nineteen thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and thirty cents. Council Bill eleven thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to authorize upgrades to the concrete island forums at the central fuel facility with Saka Companies for the amount of thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. Council Bill eleven forty dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to an agreement with Evergreen Solutions LLC for a classification and compensation study in the amount of forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Council Bill eleven forty-one dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase a utility box and snow fighting package with Bonnell Industries Incorporated on Sourcewell Contract Number one five five nine two zero in the amount of twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-three cents. Council Bill eleven forty-two dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution adopting a policy to administer requests for honorary street name designations with the city of Moline and authorizing the Director of Public Works to effectuate the fabrication and installation of approved signs. Council Bill eleven forty-three dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase a twenty twenty-three Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicle from Sexton Ford in Moline, Illinois for the amount of forty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. Council Bill eleven forty-four dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase a Ford one-ton cabin chassis for, from Sexton Ford in Moline, Illinois for the amount of fifty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. Council Bill eleven forty-five dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Kelowna for wastewater treatment plant operation and maintenance services. Council Bill eleven forty-six dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to an amendment to the WPC budget to fund the hiring of a WPC plant operator and a laborer WPC to serve in the operation of the city of Kelowna wastewater treatment plant pursuant to a proposed intergovernmental agreement pertaining to the same subject matter. Council Bill eleven forty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to an impact memorandum of understanding with the Alua Construction Labor and Management Council for the Silvis Water Main Project. Council Bill eleven forty-eight dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Silvis to establish terms related to future annexation of each community. Council Bill eleven forty-nine dash twenty twenty-two.
Can I ask you to read that and say for instead of of each community? I just think we need to be,
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Silvis to establish terms related to future annexations for each community. Council Bill eleven forty-nine dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a contract with Miller Trucking and Excavating Company for installation of a water main extension to serve portions of the city of Silvis in the amount of one million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. Council Bill eleven fifty dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a professional services agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for construction phase engineering services related to the installation of BioSalad's screw presses at the North Slope Treatment Plant in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Seven i's, no n's. And that motion passes. Not consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty nineteen dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-five zoning and land development, Division Eight Adult Use Cannabis Businesses, Section thirty-five dash thirty-eight oh one, uses permitted in zones of the Moline Code of Ordinances to allow cannabis dispensaries as a special use in areas located in the NC Neighborhood Center District and the cannabis dispensary overlay districts, and to revise internal cross-references.
Move to approve thirty nineteen, twenty twenty?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Went?
I, I, just as a, as a disclosure, that Dan Dolan, he works for the, for Rule and Rule. I work for Rule and Rule. I've done this with the last City of
done this with the last, uh, um, city attorney on with her, that there isn't a conflict. But I just wanna disclose that we work for the same company.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
So you are not asking to abstain from the voting, you're just disclosing?
No, no, just to, to disclosure that we work at the same.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Nay.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay. And that motion passes. Resolutions. Council Bill eleven fifty-one dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an test to an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Moline and the Illinois Department of Human Services, setting forth the terms for acceptance of a grant award to the police department for the sum of eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Sir, second? Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Went. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Council Bill eleven fifty-two dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the Community Economic Development Department on behalf of the city of Moline to apply to the Illinois Housing Development Authority, IDA, for an Illinois Affordable Housing Grant Fund Home Repair and Accessibility Program grant in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars, and authorizing city staff to do any and all things necessary to apply for the I- to IDA for an Illinois Affordable Housing Trust Fund Home Repair and Accessibility Program Grant.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Macias. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. First reading ordinance. Council Bill thirty twenty dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-four Personnel of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section twenty-four dash thirty-two oh seven, Appendix One, by adding a job description for rental housing and property inspector. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. So we're at miscellaneous business. And, um, obviously after a big, long week of celebrations, we have a lot to be thankful for, I think. And, um, and I'm sure you've gotten a lot of feedback. I will just say it was wonderful to see many of you throughout the week, um, celebrating with our community. And, and kudos again to all of our staff, especially Tori and, um, Macy, who headed up the planning committee, all the vendors and people we worked with. And just your support as a council financially, you know, with this idea. None, none of it would have happened without that. I know we have gotten good feedback from people who are located in downtown Moline, but were not necessarily in the fenced-in festival area. And their business did, um, they did very well over the weekend. So, I was, I was very interested in making sure that they also made out well. I think this is a good thing for downtown Moline. And I look forward to the internal, um, study and report from, by staff.
Forthcoming.
Forthcoming. Yes. I don't, uh, there are a lot of events happening in September, which I hope you're seeing on your emails. Day of Caring with United Way, um, a lot of events with the Florescente Neighborhood Group, um, all kinds of things. And so I hope you're just keeping track of that and engaging with residents. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'd just echo, you know, everyone had such a great time down there, and it was good to see the hundred and fiftieth. I was talking to Alvaro earlier, when I was eleven years old up in Wharton Fieldhouse singing with the Moline Voice Choir for the centennial we had in nineteen seventy-two. I guess you know you're old when you stick around. He pointed that out to me. Just seeing everyone down there, for the people, the citizens that didn't make it down, they really missed it. Just to see how far we've come, and everybody having such a great, great time together. It really is a positive and shows why Moline is kinda special and why we live in the Midwest, and how we really are fortunate and lucky to have a great community. So, that's it.
Uh, yeah, it's the same thing. I thoroughly enjoyed my time at, at the events. Um, and it was something really special. Uh, a lot of people that had not gathered like that were together. A lot of Molineers were together. And it wa- it was just, uh, i- i- it wa- it was great just to build those memories with, uh, a, a lot of, uh, people who I haven't seen in a long time, and meeting new people. And I even met somebody who was my cousin, and we didn't even realize it until we got together at this event. So, i- it was quite the, uh, the, the event. And, uh, yes, I think the only problem is, um, people were asking for more. We, uh, we're, we're gonna have to deal with that. Uh, but, uh, but, but aside from that, today, we, um, I actually took part with the Immigrants Entrepreneur Summit. Um, the, uh, the, the summit, they have one in Des Moines, they have one in Minnesota, and they have one here in Moline. Uh, the last time they had it in person was in twenty nineteen. Uh, but it was a, a huge turnout. Uh, maybe a hundred and fifty people or so, uh, in business owners, people aspiring to be business owners, and, uh, and just entrepreneurs. And it was a day of learning, um, about how to start your business, marketing your business, networking, great panels from experts. And, um, and I'm just glad that they chose Moline, and they keep coming back, uh, to do this event here in Moline. So, um, and then Mayor, uh, was there to do the, uh, welcoming remarks. So it was, uh, again, thank you for, uh, welcoming everybody to that event.
Ryan, I hope you, I hope you don't, I hope and don't, don't, hope you don't get inundated with phone calls. But we- Yes, I hope you do. We did make mention of some of the programs that are upcoming or in development for business development.
So, yeah, just wanted to share, it was a great event here in our backyard. Thank you.
I, I'm glad you mentioned that event. I, I had an opportunity to speak in two thousand and nineteen, uh, the last time they had it, and it was awesome event. So many great people from, I mean, all across the Midwest, but, but here as well, looking to, uh, improve and entrepreneur and, uh, and hopefully now that things are back open and moving forward, that, that's a, will be a great opportunity for them. So, thank you.
And you're on the cover of the program. I said, "Go for it."
My scrapbook. All right. Um, uh, reiterate everything, uh, a- about, uh, the, the celebration, um, but not to belabor that. Uh, a couple of other things. Just congratulations to Chief Reaganweather. He is gonna do an awesome job. Uh, coming in, big shoes to fill, fill with, uh, Chief Schneider. Um, but a- as he spoke, uh, the turnaround of where that department was when Chief Schneider, uh, started to where it is now, I'm really looking forward to now how, how, how much further they'll go. And I know with, uh, uh, Chief Reaganweather's, uh, um, leadership, they're, they're gonna do amazing things. So, uh, excited about that. Uh, also wanted to say congratulations to Mary Chapel. Uh, she's gonna be our land bank, uh, leader. Um, and this is something that I feel like it's been years since I first typed in land bank, say, hey, we need to get one of these here, that, uh, and thanks, uh, KJ, uh, and the rest of the crew of, uh, making it a reality. Mary is going to do an excellent, excellent job. Uh, for you guys who don't know, she was with, with Habitat, and, uh, she's, she's got great, uh, info that she can be bringing to us. Um, the next thing, ju- just something for staff. We had a, and this is something I've been asking about for, for a number of years as well. Uh, change orders. We, we had a change order tonight that was twenty-two percent. Uh, that, technically it violates our ordinance. We, we've got a, a ordinance, uh, twenty-seven thirty-one oh four, change orders for capital improvements, that there's a process. If we, if the change orders are so large that, that we need to be alerted to it. Cause otherwise we wind up in situations where, well, it's already done. Um, because we have at, at that point, no choice, because we've already told them to do it. And, um, and so, that's something-
Which ordinance was that again, the number there?
Twenty-seven dash thirty-one oh four.
So, Chapter twenty-seven, thirty-one oh four?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, ju- just something-
I'll look at that.
Yeah. Um, and then the last thing, to belabor this a little bit, because it was tabled, I implore the, the aldermen that voted in favor of tabling it, because I voted against it, of the enforcing of our landscape ordinance, to pull it off the table, bring it back so that we can start enforcing what we do have on the table. If you, if you don't feel comfortable with it, talk with, give a call to, uh, Chris Mathias, who was working here, that did it, enforced it for a number of years, and how well it worked. Please reach out to him, because we're gonna wind up with more just asphalt with no landscaping out there that are going to be scars on our city for decades if we don't take care of this now. So, again, I, I voted against it being tabled, so one of you guys gotta take it off the table. So, please do that. Um, and if you don't, again, if you don't feel comfortable, Cr- call Chris Mathias. He just works over at Scott County Planning. Um, he'll tell you that it, it worked great before. So, um, that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Unlike others, I will not be talking about the one fifty. I will be talking about Touch a Truck, which happened at the one fifty. Which was fantastic. First of all, warm weather, much better. Because we typically do it in, at the, the end of winter time, and people wearing coats, and we're doing it at the, at the Public Works Building. I would argue that doing it outside probably reduces our liability and is just a better experience for everyone. It was fantastic. I loved seeing the staff there. Everyone was so great. Uh, the new additions were noticed and wonderful. Uh, and I've also heard a lot of people request that we do the same thing every year. Um, I reminded them that we used to, uh, at the Riverfest. Maybe a compromise, uh, that doesn't involve the same problems that we ran into, uh, would be better. But I, I think we're all kinda hearing the same thing from people. Uh, lastly, I was on my, uh, bike ride this morning and noticed a, a, a new layer of gravel down on the Kiwanis Trail. So I wanna thank Public Works for that, or Rod, uh, if he was in charge of that. But it's been a neglected trail for quite a while, and just the, uh, the attention was duly noted. It, it was noticeably better to ride on. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Could I do one, one quick thing? I did wanna add about the one fifty is to thank Chief and security, because that was, that was something I, I heard, because the mention of the Riverfest, that there was a number of people that were like, oh, we're gonna have a big party in Moline. Great, that should be fun. But, uh, but through the hard work of, uh, the chief and, and everybody else, making it a safe, family-friendly, great event, that I, that, the number of people who were talking just about that, so that they did wanna come and do something again next year, I think it is something we should look for. But thanks for keeping it safe.
Mr. Moore?
This side. It's tough going like at the end. I'm sorry. It's okay. Word for you. Okay, I'll just bring up high, cause they have been brought up. The way you guys kept that on a time schedule, probably first time we had to do that, right? First time we've had a big event like this.
Yep.
It, it was during that little hiccup on Saturday night, I think, that people were standing around me saying, you know, it's amazing how they've been so good at keeping things on schedule. And, and no one said a bad thing about it, because it's been such a good event. So I just wanted to pass on that there was actually good feedback during that moment. And then the staff that was out there, you know, just, I heard so much feedback. Plus, my own kid was out there and my family. It was just a wonderful day at Touch a Truck. And the way staff worked with, you know, or, or just represented the city with, um, just being out there and, and talking. You know, I, I spent a lot of time talking to Josh White. He had, you know, he had the, the, the-
Signal.
Signal and the box and stuff. I mean, that's just all cool stuff. It's cool, not just for the kids. It's cool for us. It was just awesome. There was a lot of really great feedback. People are still talking about, you know, how, how great it was to interact with, with, um, the city and that thing. And so, I think staff deserves a lot of recognition.
Mr. Brian?
Kudos to staff and, and all of you for pulling it off. Uh, I remember when we did the hundred and fiftieth back in nineteen ninety-eight. The other hundred and fiftieth that we did. Whenever in doubt, I consult Barbicus's column, find out what's going on. I was actually, Thursday night, I went to your, uh, in your place. I went to the meeting at the Quat City Botanical Center about the environment and river.
Walton Family Foundation, yep.
Yes. And it was, uh, pretty informative. I found out that our neighbors to the west are the number one polluters of farm runoff of any other state. Um, so that was, uh, eye-opening. Uh, among other things that they're known for. Um, and it was, it was a good event. I, I learned, uh, there, there's a lot to learn there, and, uh, I hope we have more of those. I think I was the only person from Moline there.
Thank you for going. Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, um, just to reiterate, thank you to everyone. We've talked about everything except the rock. Though, it is actually a pretty, pretty, uh, nice-looking, uh, ornament to the city hall, too, and just a good, you know, it was a great weekend and a great, place of getting together and saw so many people interacting with their staff, interacting with each other. And, uh, just love to see that and love being a part of this community. Thank you.
Anything from staff?
Wow, everybody took everything. So I'm not gonna repeat a single word, but I'm going to say, on behalf of the staff and everybody who worked on it, first and foremost, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for believing in the idea last summer and last, last, uh, fall when we were preparing the budget, which gave us the ability to make this happen. I think the mayor mentioned it, but I think it doesn't happen unless the council supports it. So, kudos to all of you for coming out. Kudos for, for supporting it. You know, I, I would be remiss. I'm gonna repeat what you said about, about, uh, Macy and, and Tori. Um, I mean, they were the, the water bearers, no question. I mean, it was a major, major lift. And yet, we still got everything else done. We didn't miss a beat. We kept going. We kept adding this on top of it. So it's possible to do the impossible, I guess. Um, staff was wonderful. I mean, no question about it. Hive, Hive was spectacular. They were highly recommended. They delivered. Um, you know, we will have an after-action report. We're gonna come back. We'll explain to you what was great, what were the high points, what were the low points? You know, uh, what did it cost categorically? You know, where was that money going? So that we can look at that, because, you know, if I got any feedback, as I guess my, I wore my shoes out those three days out there. Um, yeah. In part being dragged onto the dance floor Friday night by, by Maria, you know? Out of Maria. But, um, you know, we'll bring, we'll bring back that report, and it'll pre- pretty much give you a snapshot where we're at. People were, people were, were thrilled. I mean, absolutely thrilled, and, and they were, they wanted more. Somebody said that. They want more. Kept saying, we need to do this on an annual basis. That's the feedback I was getting. You know, and I said, we'll see. No promises. We'll see. You know, we would never do a week-long event again. That's for sure. That's too long. You know, we wouldn't do a three-day event. That's too long, too. And we would not start it too early in the day, because there's not enough people for the amount of money being spent. So, it might be more of an evening festival on two days, a Friday and a Saturday. Maybe it wouldn't even be in August. It might be in July. So, these are the things that the, the committee is going to look at. We're gonna study and come back to council at some point during the budget and say, hey, we think we can do it. I can, I can tell you that we've already got sponsors lined up. They came to us and said, we would like to sponsor this next year if you're going to do it. So, just a heads up. It was great. And, uh, again, I wanna thank the staff, especially the staff and the committee members, and our sponsors, uh, who made our one hundred and fiftieth sesquicentennial incorporation celebration as opposed to founding celebration. And that's what it was. It was a difference between a government founding and a government incorporating. Uh, but it was, it was a fabulous event, and it's a high point in the, uh, in the memory category, you know, uh, in my career. So, thank you. Set.
Okay. Anything? Thank you. Everyone else set? All right. I need a mo- uh, public comment? Hearing none. Mr. Williams?
Your Honor, I make a motion for the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation. Five ILCS one twenty-two C eleven, collective negotiating matters, five ILCS one twenty slash two C two, and property acquisitions, five ILCS one twenty slash two C five.
Second.
Mr. Alderman. Williams, second by Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
All right, we're moving to closed session. Thank you.